We would like to welcome everyone to the June 25, 2019 City Council meeting. And we'll call this meeting to order. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance and Adam, if you'd lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Adam. This evening, we have two councilors that have excused absences. Council President Manke and Mimi Durapkin are not able to be with us this evening, and we recognize that. First on our agenda tonight, we have two proclamations that I will present. The first is going to be to our Park and Recreation Department. And this evening, if I'm not mistaken, Susan's here. We've got Katie, Ann, Janet, and possibly Rob. And so if they could come up, I'll come down and we'll... We have a proclamation designating the July as our Park and Recreation Month, whereas McMinnville's Parks and Recreation Program enhances and improves the social, economic, and environmental fabric of our community. And whereas our Park and Recreation Programs are important to making McMinnville a super cool place to live. And whereas Park and Rec Programs make people want to live here. And whereas Park and Recreation Areas help the environment and give us fresh air to breathe. And whereas our Park and Natural Recreation Areas make a fun place for kids and adults to go outside and play. And whereas the City of McMinnville recognizes the benefits of awesome parks and recreation resources. Now therefore, I Scott A. Hill, Mayor of McMinnville, do hereby extend the spirit of fund to the residents of McMinnville in recognizing the month of July as National Park and Recreation Month. In witness thereof, I have heretofore set my hand this the 25th day of June in the year 2019. Signed, Scott Hill, Mayor. And these gals up here, they do so much. It's good to see them. But Susan, would you just like to say just a couple words?
Yes, and Katie has a lot more to share. The calendar's up on the wall there, and she's got a couple highlights from the month. Come out to Parks and Rec and enjoy the month of July. Anne Lane just walked in too. She likes to make an entrance.
Senior Center, yeah.
Yeah, so we have a lot of activities at the Senior Center, Community Center, and Aquatic Center, as well as all the parks. There are extras of these at the back of the room, and they will be mailed out very soon. Most of the activities are free, so we really want everybody to come out. Our hashtag this year is #GameOnMac. We're going to do a lot of things on social media to get more involvement with the community. I think that's about it. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Katie. I now have a presentation, and it's a proclamation. And Jim Graham, Jim, you're here. If you could come up and... Welcome, sir.
Thank you.
I think this is the first time we've had this type of a proclamation, so listen with your ears. This is a proclamation, whereas the Bureau of Census in the United States Department of Commerce conducts the census and the federal government funds the cost of the census. And whereas it takes the cooperation and investments of states, local governments, and community partners working in conjunction with the federal government to ensure that the census is fully executed and represents a complete and accurate count of people within each jurisdiction. And whereas the results of this census are the foundation for many important decisions made by federal, state, and local governments, including the dispersment of federal funds to states, counties, municipalities, and the appropriation of political representation is based on population. And whereas the census data guides local decision-makers in important community planning efforts, including locations for schools, roads, hospital, childcare, senior citizen centers, et cetera. Therefore, there now therefore, the City Council of the City of McMinnville hereby proclaims the support for the effort of the 2020 census and calls upon the community to participate. Be it further resolved that the City Council calls on city officials, community leaders, representatives of the faith base, and nonprofit organizations, and representatives of historically undercounted populations to ensure that the City of McMinnville is properly and fully counted in the 2020 census. In witness thereof, I have therefore set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of McMinnville to be affixed this the 25th day of June 2019. Signed, Scott A. Hill, Mayor of McMinnville. I apologize I didn't give you the long version. Okay. We like the condensed version, but we have our full support behind what you're doing. Thank you, Jim. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to recognize this evening. We are to that point in our agenda this evening where we are looking for advice and information and reports from our council on board and committee assignments. And so I think I'm going to look down to Zach, and we'll just move in our reporting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I help represent the Council on Historic Landmarks Committee, the Landscape Committee, the McMinnville Community Media, and all three of those haven't had meetings since our last report. There have been some rejiggering on the schedules, so those won't be until my next council session. What I do have to report on is my and with Councilor Garvin's involvement in the Kids on the Block Technical Advisory Committee. Had a while since we had our last full group meeting. We've worked on some policy stuff and trying to crack the tough nut of the school board and see how we can start blending together. We're going to get the last meeting on the books to sort of wrap up what we've got, come up and answer with some of those big questions we posed at the beginning, and wrap up a presentation to come back to council at a date later and get council's input on the big policy discussions, and hopefully move forward with some good progress for the next 30, 60, 90, 100 years of Kids on the Block.
Thank you, Zach.
Thank you.
Wendy?
So we have not met since the last City Council meeting for the Third Street or for urban renewal, so I don't have anything to report at this time, but should for the next meeting.
Thank you. We'll shoot down to Adam.
Zach covered the KOB and where we're at with that. I sit on the YCOM Board and also the Airport Commission. Airport Commission hasn't met. We meet next Tuesday, the second. But I did actually go out and see Mayor today out there who runs the FBO to just to see how things were going with the fuel tank. The footing got poured for that, and he hopes to give me a call hopefully by the end of the week with the actual install date for that 100-0 lead tank. I guess the tank's finishing up the paint process right now, so it should be ready for transport here relatively shortly. And YCOM, we had that meeting a couple Thursdays ago, and that was our budget hearing meeting, and we adopted standard 3% rate increase. Outside of that, there's some talk about the House bill that Representative Noble was one of the lead sponsors on, and that it's looks like it's probably going to stay referred back down to the finance and revenue, and most likely will not get back out of that for a final vote with everything that's going on in Salem. So we might have a financial impact on that in years moving forward without that revenue for infrastructure and capital improvements to the system. But other than that, from a YCOM perspective, Willamina got $20,000 or $30,000 from Firehouse Subs for part of their radio system, which doesn't directly affect McMinnville, but it is good for the system. So congratulations to them, and thank you, Firehouse Subs. That's all I got for YCOM.
Thank you, Adam. Sal?
Yes, Mid Valley Council of Governments adopted its 2019 budget. The only Yamhill County-related bit of information was Willamina got a community development block grant, so they've been pretty active. The Parkway Committee, we are waiting to hear what happened with the final budget. In the legislature, Mayor, you might have had an update more recently than I have on that, but I think the Senate folks leaving early put that into a bit of disarray, and we may not know until September, so.
Okay. With Council President Manke gone, I'll go ahead and do the report on Visit McMinnville. We had a board meeting last week, and we were able to take a look at the budget, and the budget is in as strong a position that we have been as we're looking at enacting and moving forward on their strategic and their goals for the coming year. Tourism print pieces such as maps, brochures, card racks, and more are all being updated at the present time. Visit McMinnville is planning on a activation, media activation trip to New York City and working with the PR group. And what that will do is involve 10 local businesses, but they intend to meet with 50 of the national writers, and we've had great success in going to New York, and then the writers come out and write stories about McMinnville and wine country. Visit Newburgh has hired Leslie Caldwell as their new executive director, and we're working with Visit Newburgh in trying to help them get themselves organized. We have amplified our investments in advertising in the Seattle marketplace during the winter. We feel that that's going to bring us the greatest visitors to the area. We also are spending time with organizations like Oregon Wine Board, the Travel Oregon, Willamette Valley Wine Association, Willamette Valley Visitor Association, and many more. Counselors, be aware that Visit McMinnville sends out a report to you on a monthly basis that goes into in much depth of where they're at and what's happening, and I would ask you to take a look at that, but we will be diligent to keep you apprised of what's happening with Visit McMinnville. Something that I've neglected to do for the last two and a half years is do a reporting on my involvement with McMinnville Water and Light, sitting on the commission ex officio, but I do vote. We, as a group, have just come back from a convention with the American Public Power Association in Austin, Texas, where we have an opportunity to meet with peers across the country and be trained for five days in all the nuances of electric power. It's interesting as we look broadspanned at different geographic areas of how they generate power and the cost of power. I can just share with you, we're the second lowest power provider in the state of Oregon through McMinnville Water and Light, so good things happening there. I will consolidate and bring a more complete but condensed version of what our board meetings have been like in the future, so I'll make sure that I do that in the future. With that, let's go ahead and see if we have reports from department heads. Chief?
Yes, real quickly. We had our meeting with the Oregon International Air Show, with the Fire Department, Public Works, Legal was out there, as well as other law enforcement agencies, ODOT. That planning was a very good session. The air show seemed to be very well-prepped and versed in what they're doing and bringing to MAC. Real quickly on some project notes, as you recall, you approved the radio upgrade. Motorola is in the midst of shipping equipment to our service provider, Day Wireless, so that project is progressing rather rapidly, and we'll probably start seeing some implementation within the next two to three months, so that's exciting for our staff. We did hire a new officer, a lateral officer, Christine Rudd, and at some point, hopefully, we'll be able to bring her to the council, and she'll have a chance to meet you all. But came to us from Deschutes County, worked 13 since 2013 in law enforcement, so she's not going to have to go to the academy, which is excellent for us. And lastly, prohibited camping ordinance takes effect Thursday, and our staff has done a tremendous amount of work, both legwork and pushing information out, meeting with the press about this project. Today, cars and campsites were tagged and noticed as were required to do. We've had lots of communication with populations throughout the city, and we anticipate there being some, hopefully, good results. So that's what I've got right now.
Thank you, Chief. Susan?
Yes, just quickly, I hope you all have been by the Jay Pearson Neighborhood Park site. A lot of the groundwork and infrastructure is in place, and soon we will start to see some larger structures delivered to the site. Pretty soon here, we'll start thinking about scheduling the ribbon cutting for the park there, and it's going to get really exciting. So you can see it start to take shape out there, and that's very exciting. I wanted to thank everybody who's responded to the survey that we did on the facilities piece. You can see on your Parks and Rec schedule, we will be back to you on July 17 to report out the results of that and talk a little bit more about the condition of the facilities in Parks and Rec. And also just thank the people, there's a lot of people in the community that partner on Parks and Rec Month, and we do a lot of partnering, but Partners for Parks and Four Elements Yoga and Erin Bowman are offering a number of free things for our patrons through the month of July, so that's a great contribution for us.
Thank you, Susan. Kylie?
Just one quick thing to report. The last council meeting, I mentioned that we were going to bring on an intern. Megan is here tonight with us. She's in the back row, and she's been working on a lot of policies related to human resources, and she's also helping us with some strategic plan communications. So hopefully, we'll have some things to report to the council near the end of her internship in August.
Thank you, and welcome, Megan. It's good to have you with us. Marsha?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to talk about a ratings call that we had with Moody's Investor Services that ended up giving us some good news. We were contacted by Moody's Investor Services a couple weeks ago for a ratings call, and that was somewhat unusual, because typically, we only have ratings calls with them, you know, where they're rating the quality of our debt, basically our bonds. Usually, they only call us when we're getting ready to issue debt. So we had a really good discussion with Pat Libertor, who has been with Moody for a while, and we have worked with him before. And after the call, we actually called our municipal advisor Duncan Brown to see if we get some context for why we might have gotten that request to have a discussion with them. He talked about the current regulatory environment. He mentioned the Dodd-Frank Act and said that regulators are being more diligent in complying with their requirements to perform the rating calls on a regular cycle. So we were very pleased when Mr. Libertor notified us that Moody's had completed their review, and the city's current rating of AA3 is considered appropriate, and there was no need for a new rating. And just to give you some context, obligations that are rated AA3 are judged to be of high quality and subject to very low credit risk. So we were very happy that we maintained that rating.
Congratulations, and that goes to the staff and council. We all work hard to have that kind of a rating, so thank you, Marsha. Heather? Scott? Okay. Melissa? David?
Excuse me. Looking at in the audience, I don't recognize any faces from our municipal court arraignment two weeks ago, which is probably a good thing. I will note that we continue to hold municipal court here in this room on Wednesdays. We do misdemeanor arraignment on the second and fourth Wednesday, which happens to be tomorrow. We've got 22 first appearances, again, anything from drinking in public, public elimination, up to driving under the influence, hit-and-run, and all other misdemeanors in between. So if folks want to see front lines of what happens after somebody is cited, arrested into court, or arrested and cited into court, municipal court is open to the public. You can sit out in the audience along with the defendants, if you'd like, to observe and see what happens when folks come before the court for crimes.
Thank you, David. Jeff?
Nothing additional there.
Okay, thank you. A part of your package, you'll see our cash and investment reports attached for your consideration. This takes us to public comments section of our meeting this evening, and I invite anyone to speak on topics other than matters that are in litigation, quasi-judicial land use matters, a matter scheduled for public hearing at some future date. We will limit these comments to three minutes per person for a total of 30 minutes this evening. I have eight public comment cards that have been turned in, and so we'll go ahead and get started. Joya Goodrum from the chamber, Joya? Welcome. Always good to see you.
Good to see you too, Mayor. Good evening, Joya Goodrum with the McMinnville Chamber, 417 Northwest Adams Street here in McMinnville. Good evening, Mayor, councilors, staff, and guests. I've heard from several businesses in the Lafayette and Riverside area that are upset about the repurposing of city land without any planning, hearing, or notification to the neighbors abutting the property. What is the process to make changes to have use to a property? Do the ordinances only apply to citizens when making a change to the use of a property? And what is the zoning for that particular property? Is it commercial or residential? Because we're not aware of that. Please collaborate with your business community. We want to be supportive of your initiatives, and it's upsetting to your constituents to see on Facebook the city's plans to set up a homeless camp next door to them. I understand that there will be a limited number of campers. However, your neighbors would appreciate a heads-up on decisions that will impact them. Thank you.
Thank you, Joya. We'd ask you to hold any applause during comment session. Barbara Dell, Barbara, if you'd come up? Welcome.
Thank you very much. I'm going to kind of echo what Joya had to say. I'm one of those residents that live in the area that has somewhat, I guess, come about as being proposed for a place to move these homeless people to. We did have the police department and some other heads of different groups come to our residents and have a meeting with us about what was going to be going on on Marsh Street and Alpine Street. And so it's just been brought to my attention that they're planning to move them to a lot, which is even going to have more actual visibility than those locations do have. I think that as a resident in the area, I feel as though this is going to have a huge impact on my equity in my home. We are already feeling a little bit of the fallout from these people ravaging our community, coming through our community when most of us are sleeping, and helping themselves to some of the amenities that we might have on our property. Another one of my biggest concerns is the Parks and Recreation, and they gave a nice presentation, but my grandchildren play at the park. It is very impacted right now by this whole problem that we have. And I know that as parents will start to pull their kids out of that situation, that will impact the Parks and Recreation's bottom line as far as dollars, because they pay to go to that park and use that facility for the summer. So I just think that this is a, might be just a Band-Aid, and a very small Band-Aid for the huge problem that we have in those communities. I think what's being proposed is not even anywhere near close to big enough to handle this situation, and it certainly will not prevent these people from continuing to go where they want to go.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you.
Andrew Holliday?
My name's Andrew Holliday. I'm the owner of Matt Glass and a resident of McMinnville's Ward 3. I also oppose the plan to change the lot there at Riverside Drive and Lafayette Avenue to a camp spot. It adjoins my property. I feel it will have a direct effect on my business in multiple facets. First, customers planning to come and visit my business will feel intimidated and threatened the same way that citizens have voiced about going to Water and Light. Second, if the city plans to allow Champion Team to build a privacy fence around the property, it will make all my signage and advertisement completely invisible from the My signs have been vandalized and destroyed on multiple occasions. I've had river rocks and other debris, someone's yard sign, address signed from the fire department thrown in my parking lot. I've had product damaged from river rocks being thrown into my parking lot at night. Profanity and crude pictures being graffitied on my signs that I have to explain to my children that are frequent at my business. I've had multiple individuals enter my place of business and pretend to ask service-related questions, mostly just to be able to scope out what they can see inside of the shop area from the office area. One particular individual, when he turned around and left after a very strange interaction, I could see he had theft tools in his pocket, wire cutters, screwdriver, file, and hacksaw blade were all sticking out of his back pocket. He walked to the back of my idling service truck and pretended to warm his hands while scoping out the tools and stuff that was in the back of my service truck. There are multiple safety issues I see with the proposed location. First, again, I am a very small, family-run business. I have a three-year-old son, and my five-year-old niece frequent my business. They ride their bikes and play outdoor games in the parking lot. And throughout most of the day, they are only at the shop with their mothers while myself and my other technicians are out servicing the community. So I fear for their safety and their comfort while they're helping me run my business. Second, the stoplight is too close to the driveway, or the driveway's too close to the stoplight there on Lafayette Avenue and Riverside Drive. When our building was being constructed, a other business owner approached the city to have a coffee shop put in on that property, just a mobile coffee stand, and he was told that he would have to gain easement through our driveway for said the same reasons. So I'm not sure why that applied to him and not today to the proposed Champion site. I understand what Champion Team's trying to do, and I do. They have great intentions. However, the way that myself and the other business owners in the area found out was less than par.
Thank you, Andrew. Appreciate your comments. Aaron Artea? Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Aaron Orta. I live in Ward 2, and I would like to touch on the safe overnight camping plan that will allow up to three vehicles or tents in any combination per site, otherwise known as ordinance 5064. Why is the public not being informed about the camping program sites that are city property in a timely manner? Have the homeowners and businesses near these sites been notified in order them give them a chance to refute the proposed site? It seems they have not been properly notified. Additionally, who is paying for the upkeep of these sites? Is the money coming from the grant given to Champion Team, or are we using city resources to provide the funding? Because if we are using city money, then the public has the right to know beforehand. Action without public input is not governing. The vetting process for these individuals seems lackluster at best. When asked by myself directly, the Director of Champion Team did not know that the national database and the county database only reports Level 3 sex offenders, not Level 1 or 2. This does not instill confidence that this is a professional program. A specific background investigation would have to be conducted for each individual translating into more cost. Since the city is allowing camping on a site of city property... on a site of city property, what steps are being taken to protect the owners, employees and the family members? I pose this question because it seems that the surrounding businesses on the proposed site on Lafayette and Riverside were not involved in the decision of the campsite. What are the projected problems that placing a site on the corner of Lafayette and Riverside will have on the urban renewal process? Specifically, there does not seem to be a time limit for any person camping. If this camping program could potentially affect business in the area, should we go ahead and ask any businesses that were thinking of occupying the Mac Market to go elsewhere? Will these businesses be informed that a camping site is near their business? Businesses such as Matt Glass, Nice Electric and Lewis Furniture have already and will be further affected. Just so you know, Nice Electric was broken into on Sunday. I believe that we as a community are looking at the problem from an incorrect perspective. We are focusing on the problem as a lack of affordable housing, which I am not disputing. What we do not seem to be doing is accepting the fact that we have a serious substance abuse and mental health problem. We need more resources to provide rehab facilities and services along with a greater emphasis on mental health treatment. Now, I understand that many of the positions here are voluntary. However, you took an oath to serve the people, and it does not seem to be happening here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Aaron. Buffy Miller. Welcome.
Thank you. I am Buffy Miller. I have lived in McMinnville Manor Mobile Home Park for over 20 years. McMinnville Manor is located on Riverside Drive across the street from the lot where the homeless camp is about to be set up. I found out about this camp on Facebook. We are a 55 and older park and have always been the nicest mobile home park in McMinnville. We had a meeting in our clubhouse on June 3 that was attended by representatives from the police department, the city council, the planning director was there, and the park and rec director. A resident asked at the meeting if a camp would be put on the city-owned property at Lafayette and Riverside Drive. We were told that would not happen. At this meeting, we had one resident, a woman who lives alone, describe how terrified she is when she sees the street people in the dog park looking at her through the chain-link fence as she sits in her home or is in her backyard. The camp across the street will bring more terror to our elderly residents, and we have a lot of widows that are living there by themselves. We have always had a very safe and beautiful mobile home park. Now we are the park that the homeless crawl through every night like rats looking for food. Many of our residents are on fixed incomes. Now we have to install locks, alarms, motion detector lights, and even locking gas caps on our cars. Some of our residents can't afford all the equipment needed to put our homes in lockdown. It's difficult to find affordable housing in McMinnville today. Our park is not only the nicest park in McMinnville, but one of the few places with affordable housing. People will not want to buy in an area across the street from a camp. We discovered that the street people were taking showers in our clubhouse. We have had to lock up our clubhouse so they will not take showers, use our facilities and steal from our building. Every June, we have a park-wide garage sale. We were forced to cancel it this year. We knew that opening up our park to the public would mean that the street people would be stealing our garage sale items and casing our properties. We now have the police driving through our park on a regular basis. Before that, I don't remember hardly ever seeing police drive through the park at all. So our park has now had to spend money to install gates and signage and cameras. So all of our homes in our park has kind of gone on lockdown, and this has all occurred before this camp has been set up.
Thank you, Buffy. Ann Cromer. Welcome, Ann.
Thank you. Thank you very much for listening to me. I am Ann Cromer, the manager of McMinnville Manor Mobile Home Park. I've been there 17 years. The park has always been a very peaceful place to live, except for the past year and a half since the homeless camp down the road. I've kind of changed my title. I am now security guard because in the middle of the night, I'm in my car chasing them out of the park. Now, I won't get out of my car because I'm not stupid, but it's very dangerous in there. I have 126 residents, 50% of them single senior ladies that are afraid to be by themselves. And putting the camp down the corner, you're bringing them closer. The rest of them are not going to go away. And I was told that they're not allowed to camp in residential areas, which McMinnville Manor is. They're right across the street from us. It's in the urban renewal area. So it seems like everything else has gone out the window when it comes to taking care of... The majority of them don't want to work. They want to get whatever you want to give them, but they don't want to put out. And all they're doing is making all of our lives very miserable, and putting the camp there is just going to make matters a lot worse. So that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Sharon Ryan. Welcome, Sharon.
My name is Sharon. I'm a resident of McMinnville Manor. Nervous. For the past year or so, I've been afraid to go in my backyard and get scared and anxious at any unexpected sounds. Why? There's a homeless camp up the street. My neighbors and I have been yelled at by passerbyers when in our backyards. Some have witnessed people climbing over my fence. I have found human waste in my backyard. I've heard someone running across my back deck after dark. People have been seen entering my yard in the middle, in the early morning, and my alarm has gone off on my car one, you know, dawn. Also, we're unable to use our facilities, the pool in the clubhouse, due to invasion of the homeless people. A year ago, a little over a year ago, prior to this, I felt safe in my home. I no longer feel that way. Recently, my community met with the police chief and other town officials. We were told that they were being disbanded, the homeless camp. We expressed relief, and now we're told that they're going to move even closer into our backyards. Why here? Or is it because we're elderly, considered weak and defenseless, and therefore no threat to infusion to a homeless camp? I don't understand. This is, I love McMinnville. I really, I always felt very, it's such a beautiful place, and everything about it has been great up until this point. I've worked very hard and supported my children by myself. I'm working two and three jobs for eight years. I moved to McMinnville finally. I lived here in 2005, moved back in 2011, and I could afford my home in McMinnville Manor and felt safe and secure and happy. It's a peaceful, I believe in peaceful coexistence. The group that has taken up residence in the camp nearby does not. They harass us, they stalk us, they steal or attempt to steal from us, and generally take advantage of us. And it appears that the town has made the decision to take away our rights to live safely as residents of this community and citizens of this town. I know times are tough for a lot of people, and it's hard for some working people earning only minimum wage to afford a roof over their heads. I feel bad for them, and they deserve a break. Unfortunately, if homeless, if homeless, they're grouped in with those who don't want to work and prey on anyone that they can take advantage of. The latter are the people that we have encountered in the nearby camp, and now the town has decided to move them in our backyard. Please don't do this and help us stay safe.
Thank you, Sharon. Appreciate it. Melissa, do we have any, okay.
Thank you for letting me share some of my thoughts here this evening. Nice Electric has been in the McMinnville area since the early 90s. We've had a few break-ins over the years, but since November of last year, we were trying to count today. My secretary and I were going through the records of, some of them we have real damage and some of them people just kind of wander in and siphon gas. But it's somewhere between the area of seven and nine break-ins since November. It's about one a month. Sunday, again, we were broken into. They've become more and more emboldened. Sunday, they broke in early. They broke the windows of one of my vans, stole some of the tools, and then came back later on that same night to try to steal some more. Fortunately, my son had moved the van inside, and the cops had shown up, but they were there looking for more stuff out of that van. Fortunately, we've got a good video of them this time, and we put it on YAMPA watch, and we've got a name, so hopefully we'll be getting some results out of that. However, the results that come out of that are very disheartening. When you talk about people that have no integrity, that are willing to steal your things, that don't care about the reprisals that come from an arrest, they don't care if they have a felony on their record because they're not looking for a job. So then we give them a fine that they will not pay, and then we do not put them in prison because we can't afford to. As business owners, our options are totally extinguished, as I see it. The police want to help. I've got a few of them on the force that are my friends, and I call them. I said, "Should I report it?" The answer is, well, if you want to build a case for down the road, if we ever want to do something about the homeless camp, then maybe it makes sense. But otherwise, yeah, it's probably not going to do anything about it because they're too busy with other things, and there is no real reprisal to these. Bottom line is, it's been there, and now it's moving closer, and it really does make me give pause. I would not want this. I don't live in town, but I would not want this in my backyard in Carlton.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments this evening. That takes us to presentation, and is Gary here this evening? There he is. Gary's here to receive a report and recommendation from Hagan Hamilton to approve the 2019-2020 property liability, workman compensation, and auto insurance coverage. Gary, it's good to see you again.
Good to see you, Mr. Mayor, Council, Jeff, David. I assume you all have a copy of my stewardship report in your packets?
It is.
And we did have some fairly significant increases in the premiums this year, which I wanted to try to address questions on that. And also, there's a couple of other items that are coming up that I wanted to be able to have a little bit of discussion on regarding some liability exposures. My recommendation is to renew with the City-County Insurance Services, which is a real solid risk retention group. It's been in existence since 1981, and it's one of the most successful risk retention groups in the nation. There's a lot of reasons for that, but some of the reasons are starting to deteriorate with the, a lot of the lawsuits in recent years have taken a little bit of a toll as far as reserves, and especially with the communities that have jails, like the county, for example. It's raised a lot of concerns, and it's increased some of the rates along the way. However, the rates are still very competitive. If you compare them with what the private industry would provide. First of all, you can't get these same coverages in a, from a private carrier. You'd have to buy seven or eight policies to even get the limits and to structure it. We had to move one community into a, out of the risk retention group, and it ended up tripling their premiums and limited their coverages significantly. So it is still a very viable program, but the costs are not insignificant. That said, the renewal is up about 9%, 10% on the package policy. It's, a lot of this is, the increase is personal services expenditures. I think we've added a couple of police officers. We've added some equipment. We've increased all the property values. So most of the increase is attributed to that directly. So it hasn't been a real large rate increase. It's been a little bit of an increase of exposures. The other side of it that I did want to talk about tonight is, we are trying to propose to all the communities that we work with to increase their limits of liability from $5 million to $10 million. The cost on this would be $7,000, which sounds significant, but once again, if you were to purchase that in a private carrier, it would be considerably higher than that. And the reason that we would like to at least have a discussion on it is because there's a lot of suits which could come into play which may not fall under the protection of the Oregon Tour laws. And David could address that a lot better than I can. But it is something, especially with regard to the city council and everybody else, that does have exposures personally, as well as the business, as well as the operations of the city. It just gives you that much more protection. The biggest thing is you're sharing these limits with each other. And so it's something that I highly recommend. I feel that, once again, a director's and officer's policy for a nonprofit, which is handling a budget this side, would probably be $50,000 to $60,000 all by itself for a $5 million limit. And so you get to a $10 million. Plus, in addition to that, this has unlimited defense costs, so you have a much broader form here, and I do recommend consideration of that. The next item is the workers' compensation, which actually has dropped slightly. We had a experience mod decrease from .97 to .89, which is excellent, especially with the activities that are always going on with the police and the fire department. It's, they've done a really good job on managing those type of claims, and I think that's going to continue to show, have a positive impact going forward. But we're down about $4,000, $4,500, which is excellent on the workers' comp as far as the deposit premium is concerned. The last item is the airport liability, and with the upcoming activities at the airport, we are going to be facing some additional, possibly some additional costs there with regard to special events and the aforementioned airshow, which is coming into the discussion. We're probably, obviously going to protect, David's going to protect the community with the contracts and everything that can be done, but at the same time, the city still will have a liability there. And there's a $5 million limit on our current policy for the airport, and I did get a quote today, an indication to increase that to $10 million. The cost on that is even more significant. It'd be $14,500 to go from $5,600. So that's about a $9,000 increase if you were to do that. But it is something that I think is, it could be passed through on the expense side of the activities, but it is something that I think in order to keep up with the other exposures, it wouldn't be prudent to maintain a lower limit on one aspect of your operations than it would the others. And it is excluded under the CIS policy. So that said, I would like to answer any questions because I just kind of skimmed over the top here.
Thank you, Gary. We'll go ahead and open it for questions from council. Any questions for Gary on our insurance coverage for the coming year? Adam?
Gary, on the experience modification factor, you've handled this policy for a number of years, and we just, we're getting a decrease this year, but overall, where have we typically ran as far as that factor goes? I know... I know that we had some claims and that's why it was up high, but should we expect it to stay around the .89 or will it continue to fall?
Realistically, I think you can't expect it to even go a little bit lower. A lot of it is having to do with just being awareness, creating the safety culture. We had a lot of activity back probably 10, I'd say in the last 15 years, where it got well over one. I think we were over 1.25 at one time. Marcia probably could attest to that. But it's, so it's gone down and I think you can continue to expect that if, but the hard part about it is if you have one or two back injuries or something like that, it does, you know, it doesn't take long for it to have an impact on the experience mod. But right now, it's trending in a good direction.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, Gary, thank you so very much. We appreciate your hard work and keeping this at a level that we can understand the coverages. I know you came to Water and Light last week and we had the same discussion. We truly appreciate you having that longer view look for us and giving us a heads up. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor?
Yes, Adam?
Are we going to have any discussion on if we want to up limits on either one of those policies or is that something more administrative for Jeff or?
I don't know that we need any specific council action at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Glenda, sorry, they stuck together. So we have one more public comment that was a part of the group that stuck together with another one. So Glenda Curl is going to address this. Glenda, thank you.
Thank you. My name is Glenda and I was born and raised in McMinnville. And I have moved to McMinnville Manor about three years ago. Anyway, this last year, year and a half, as they've spoken, I just wanted to reiterate the fact of the volume of homeless that are going through our park and that you understand how horrible it is right now. I've had people come up and around my house and clear to my front door and destroy things and break things. And where I live, I can see the volume of people that come through the main entrance of the park and I also see the volume that jump over the fence behind the furniture store. And I can tell you quite honestly, it's hundreds. It's not two or three, it's hundreds that have come through. And they don't care. I don't sleep well at night, I'm up for various reasons, but I see men on bicycles and women on skateboards and just walking through. They come through with an empty backpack and when they leave, it's full. So I just wanted everybody to understand, if you move any percentage of the homeless down the street next to our fence, we are going to be absolutely overwhelmed. That was all, I wanted to make sure. And I wanted to thank the police department, the job they are doing down there, we have seen them, and it is overwhelming. And the brave policemen that address these issues. And like the chief said, the community offers all the assistance to these people and 80, 90% of them do not want it. They want to come steal and get their drugs and go back. They don't care where they get their things from, as long as they get their drugs. But I just, I wanted you to know that this is a horrendous problem. They don't even slow down. I can get up at 2:00 in the morning and find people, 4:00 in the morning. I mean, it's just all time of the day. If it's sunshining, raining, they're through the park. And I've watched them go around a mobile and around a mobile and then the next mobile and the next mobile. And they're searching for things. And they go behind mobiles. And I knew one lady was home alone. And so I called the police and he came out from there and went around the next one a couple of times. And of course, they are so busy, by the time they could get there, they would have been gone. I called back and said, "You can forget it, he's gone."
Thank you, Glenda.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Okay, that takes us this evening. We have two public hearings. The first public hearing is for the 2019-2020 budget to be adopted by the City Council for the Park Development Fund. And so Marcia, we'll call on you to give a report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would refer you to the staff report in your packet. This budget hearing, as you mentioned, is related to adoption of the budget for the fiscal year 2019-20, which is in your agenda for later this evening. Local budget law allows the governing body to make changes to the budget that was adopted by the, or approved by the Budget Committee. However, if a change in the appropriations is an increase of more than 10%, a budget hearing must be held and the financial summary must be republished. So the purpose of this budget hearing is to take comment on the proposed increase in the 2019-20 budget for the Park Development Fund, and that increase does exceed the 10% limit. The change that we are discussing here is due to a carryover of the project for the J. Pearson Neighborhood Park. And it was not completed or the process of building the park was not where we had initially thought it would be at June 30. So it's really just being extended into the 1920 budget year. Grant donation revenue that was received specifically for the park will also be carried forward to 2019-20. And I also wanted to mention that the revised financial summary was published as required by local budget law.
Thank you, Marcia. What I will do now is open the public hearing and take any comment. I'll take any comment on the public hearing for the 2019-2020 to be adopted by City Council for the Park Development Fund. Anyone that would like to address? Hearing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. And any questions of Marcia? Go ahead, Zach.
This may be more for Susan, but are you able to define better the $16,000 increase in materials and services appropriations? In the Park Development Fund, the 2019 budget presented to the council for adoption reflects a total increase in appropriations of $662, $652, with increases in materials and services appropriations of $16,000.
I think that was because we did not have all, I'm not sure, Marcia may be able to clarify this. We did not have very many line items in the budget when we initially started or conceived the project and laid out the budget for the J. Pearson Park. So we were taking, I think, if I'm on the right track, Marcia? Yeah, we were taking some of the purchasing for equipment, which we thought was going to be paid for out of the construction. So for example, the bathroom, we initially thought was going to be paid, or was going to be stick-built from the ground up and be in the construction line item, but it actually ended up being an object that we purchased. I think that might be what you're asking about. Does that make sense, Marcia?
That is correct.
I, let me talk to Marcia just for a second, I'll try and get my answer.
Sounds good.
I think that was, that is simply a carryover. We did not end up spending it in 2019 and so we carried an additional $20,000 over. Mecase Spizito, which is our professional, they're the ones that were, the designer, they are also helping us manage the construction project that will go forward into this fiscal year.
Okay.
So it's a carryover of $20,000. We had $4,000 in that line item originally, we increased it by 16 and that was to carry over some of the, the overall contract for Mecase Spizito has not expanded.
Got it. Thank you.
I actually have a follow-up to that question.
I'm done with my questions.
Oh.
Thank you, Zach. Wendy?
I was wondering, since it, they are carryovers and I know that those funds came from the park on, does that then also carry over those funds were already there? So it won't be a deficit, the revenue or the funds are still going to carry over as well, so they'll cancel each other out?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Any other comments? Hearing none. We have another public hearing, a public hearing for the 2019-2020 budget to be adopted by the City Council for the Airport Fund. And we'll call on Marcia to go ahead and give us a presentation on those funds.
Thank you. This budget hearing is also, again, related to the adoption of the 2019-20 budget that is on your agenda for later this evening. The purpose of this budget hearing is to take public comment on the proposed increase in the 2019-20 budget for the Airport Maintenance Fund, and that increase also exceeds the 10% limit. Here again, the change is simply due to a carryover of a previous project that the process, or the progress of the project wasn't where we thought it would be at June 30. And so the appropriations and the resources are just being pushed into the next fiscal year. The total increase in the Airport Fund expenditures in the 2019-20 budget is $133,128.
Thank you, Marcia. So I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I've opened the public hearing for the 2019-2020 budget to be adopted by the City Council for the Airport Fund. Anyone that would like to come and have testimony? Seeing none, I will go ahead and close that budget, the public hearing. Any questions from council to Marcia on this particular fund? Hearing none. Thank you, Marcia. And we've completed our public hearings this evening. That takes us to the consent agenda. We have a number of items this evening on the consent agenda. Consideration for meeting, the minutes of the meeting of March 20th and April 17th and work session. We have three LOC C full and winery locations and licenses. We also have four resolutions that have the full reports in your packet. Is there any item that a counselor would like to take off the consent agenda this evening? Sal?
I think we should take Resolution 2019-43 off the consent agenda.
Any others? So we've been asked to consider Resolution Number 2019-43 separately.
Can I ask Sal why?
Yeah, this is the contract with the Rural Fire District. And my concern is that we are not recapturing the full costs of service to the Rural Fire District. And I think that that is something we should probably discuss.
Sounds good with me?
It's fine, yeah. We'll go ahead. So I will ask for a motion to accept the consent agenda minus Item H, which is the Resolution Number 2019-43.
So moved?
Seconded.
It's been moved by Zach and seconded by Adam. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by saying nay? The consent agenda as presented has, is passed unanimously. Let's, now as we go into resolution, we will move Resolution Number 2019-43. And we've got, from the Fire Department, any, anyone prepared to go into more detail on that or do we maybe need to? Rich is in Amity tonight at City Council with them tonight. What's your thoughts? Put it off to our next meeting? Go ahead.
If we put this off to the next meeting, the intergovernmental agreement, I believe, goes into effect, is supposed to go into effect July 1st. So could be a delay on that. I just want to note that if the council wants to table it, they can, but that's a potential consequence of doing that.
We've been, we've been doing this contract with Rural Fire District for years and it's not my understanding that we were recovering cost. Is that, is that your field?
Let's, I'd like to hear the council ask whatever questions you have. We can't guess what the answers are if we don't know the questions.
Okay, go ahead, Sal, if you'd.
So my recollection from the 2018 budget is that we, sorry, can people hear me? Okay. So my recollection was that from the 2018 budget, that the amount that we are contracting with the Rural Fire District is substantially less than the cost of providing services to that district. And I guess at that time, I raised the concern that we should be recapturing more of these costs on a going-forward basis. And it seems that we're just renewing the same contract that we had and given the staffing shortage that we have in our Fire Department, it seems to me that, I guess my question is, why are we not trying to recapture more of these costs? And if I'm, if I'm not accurate in these statements, then I'd like to be corrected as well.
And we're looking at the state revenue sharing, correct? That portion that we're getting from the state revenue sharing to go to that particular?
So the way I recall the conversation, I may not have it exactly, but there were some concerns about the emergency medical service and whether or not the outlying areas were subsidizing EMS services. This is, this is related to the Fire Protection Service that we provide to the district, not to EMS. And so I actually think, I don't think there is a significant loss in terms of the service. We do try to capture actual service and we try to manage the cost increase to take into account both the growth of our budget and the revenue for the Rural Fire Protection District. But I actually think this is a cost recovery model and so I'm comfortable recommending that we move this forward. Also equally comfortable that we can bring back some additional information to better inform the council, if you're comfortable. And then I'll look to the two deputy chiefs if there's anything that either of you would like to add tonight to that. Would you come to the mic, Amy, so we can hear you?
So I would just add that the Rural Fire Protection District has vowed and we're entering into a contract with them where they are going to be providing 50% of the cost of a brush rig. While that doesn't look like apples to apples as far as what you would consider cost recovery and certainly we could look into those numbers and get some better information on that. We do have a good partnership with them.
So if I may, what I'd be interested in is regardless of what happens tonight, I'd be interested in knowing what the actual cost of service is versus the cost recovery.
Okay.
Because I think that's important, both for fire and for ambulance, because I do think that we're
Certainly.
We're under in both.
Certainly.
Thank you. Okay.
Anyone else? Okay.
Any other questions as it relates to Resolution 2019-43?
Not to 43 directly, but I would like further information, especially on EMS, but I'd be interested in rural fire protection costs as well. But I definitely think rural EMS, there's a larger gap than just fire protection. I am thankful for the partnership that the Rural Fire District has been and how they've helped us out with foam systems and Engine 16 when that pump went down. And I do think they've been a good partner, but I would agree with Sal that, you know, it's always good to look at contracts and look at costs and make sure that we are getting the most amount of value that we can and doing our due diligence, I guess would be the best way to put it.
Wendy?
I would say that I'm in agreement with Sal and Adam with regards to just seeing the numbers. If, I do seem to remember that we weren't that far apart on the brush, but I don't have that at the top. I think it was EMS that there was that delta. This is a year contract, we do it annually. So if we, if we So if we, if we went beyond the July 1, what would happen, David? If we did, say we did decide to wait to vote until we saw those numbers, what would the result be?
If the current intergovernmental agreement expires on June 30th, there will be no contractor agreement in place between the city and the McMinnville Rural Fire Protection District for the city to provide firefighting services or other services under the contract outside the city and in the district. And whether we will continue to provide that service with the hope that we would eventually enter into an agreement related to reimbursement or costs of providing that service, I can't answer that. But I could tell you that the existing contract, I believe, would expire, and there would be no new contract to carry it up. I'm looking for, not having anticipated the question, is if there's a savings clause in here that says that it will continue.
Can I make a comment, Mayor?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I don't want to do anything to destabilize the relationship with the rural fire district tonight. And I think raising, threatening the contract, I think, would certainly do that. So I would not be in favor of doing that. However, in this calendar year, you know, as we get these questions answered, this is something where I'd like a lot more attention to be paid as we go forward.
So we'll then have staff bring those answers back and make it an agenda item at a later date so that we can address it?
Yeah.
Okay, so with that being said, I'll ask for a motion for Resolution 2019-43.
Can I ask one more question real quick?
Okay.
So this is for fire. Do we have a contract for rural EMS, or is that just part of our?
It's part of our ambulance service area. That's
Yeah.
by the county.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Okay. So I'll take a motion.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Adam, seconded by Zach. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution 2019-43 passes unanimously. Thank you for the discussion. This takes us this evening to a number of resolutions that we have. The first resolution outside of the consent agenda is Resolution 2019-44, a resolution adopting a supplemental budget for fiscal year 2018-19 and making supplemental appropriations related to transit lodging tax fund and the general fund non-departmental. Marcia, I'll have you give us a report on that.
Yes, thank you. I would point out that the next four resolutions that are on your agenda, 44, 45, 46, and 47, are all relating to the current fiscal year. So these are adjustments that we are making to the current budgets in these different funds.
With that, we can open discussion on any four of those items. Thank you, Marcia.
If you would like to. I just wanted to, because we have so many resolutions on the agenda, I just wanted to make clear these next four are about the current year. So to start with, Resolution 2019-44, that is adopting a budget and making additional appropriations in both the transient lodging tax fund and in the general fund. So in 2018-19, we estimated that there would be about 1.2 million in transient lodging tax revenue received in the current year. Based on current receipts, it looks like that might be closer to 1.3 million. So with the city transferring 30% of the TLT revenue to the general fund, because the TLT revenue is higher than what we expected, the transfer to the general fund, the amount of that would also be higher than what we budgeted. So this resolution increases in the transient lodging tax fund. It increases the revenue for 40,000, which is an estimate of the revenue that we expect to receive relating to the transient lodging tax. But then we're increasing the transfer out by 40,000. So that allows us to make that transfer from the transient lodging tax fund, actually, to the general fund because of that additional revenue. Then on the general fund side, to match that, we would show an increase in the transfers in from the transient lodging tax fund. And to offset that, we would put that additional 40,000 in contingency. I wouldn't expect that we would spend that between now and June 30. So that extra 40,000 that would be in the general fund contingency would just flow over into 1920. And so it's really the two, the transactions, the adjustments in the two funds are offsetting of each other.
Thank you, Marcia. Any questions on Resolution 2019-44? Sal?
I just have a related question, Marcia. So this is the, this $40,000 is the additional of the 30% that the city, it's a 70-30 split, this is the 30% that gets split. Do we have to make another resolution to deal with the increased amount for the other portion?
That's a very good question. The 70% of the transient lodging tax that we dispersed to visit McMinnville, actually, those taxes aren't due, or I'm sorry, the, we're doing an estimate with the 40,000, and we want to line that transfer up with the current fiscal year. So the taxes for the April, May, June quarter are actually not due until August, I'm sorry, July 31st. We won't be turning that 70% over to visit McMinnville until the middle of August. So it may very well be that we will need to make an adjustment in the next fiscal year if these revenues continue to be stronger than we expected. But it will be very early in the fiscal year, so when we discussed that, we thought it would be better to wait until closer to the end of 2019-20 and see if an adjustment was required.
Okay. Thank you, Marcia. Any other questions? Zach?
In the resolution, why does it then involve the telecommunications fund? Wasn't clear to me.
That would be the next one.
2019-44?
Let's see.
Making supplemental appropriations for the telecommuni-
That's 45.
I'm looking at the recommendation for Resolution 2019-44, adoption of Resolution 2019-44, adopting a supplemental budget for fiscal year 1819 and making supplemental appropriations for the telecommunications fund and general fund.
Yeah, it looks like it might be a typo online.
Yeah, that would make sense, because it's the first time the telecommunications fund has been referenced, so that was, that clears up.
It's a typo, so it will be 45.
Apologize for that error.
Okay, that is 4, okay, that makes more sense.
2019-45 is, as you said, related to the telecommunications fund.
Got it.
So going back to 44, any other questions?
Only one out of 560 pages, had that little error, so it's pretty good.
Pretty good.
Appreciate that.
Pretty good. 560 pages, don't know if you heard that one, though. 560. So do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Zach, seconded by Wendy. All in favor of approving Resolution 2019-44, so indicate with saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please indicate by saying nay. That takes us to then 2019-45, a adoption, a resolution adopting a supplemental budget for the fiscal year 1819 and making supplemental appropriations, and this is telecommunications fund. Marcia?
All right, thank you. Supplemental budget, as you know, increases the appropriations, and in this case, we're increasing appropriations because, again, we are bringing in more franchise fee revenue than what we expected. So in this fund, it's a little bit more straightforward, because, as you know, the telecommunications revenue that is dispersed to McMinnville Community Media, MCM, because the revenue is more, the dispersment to MCM will be more. So we're just increasing that appropriation to allow us to disperse that additional revenue to MCM.
Thank you, Marcia. Any questions of Marcia on this resolution? Hearing none, then I'll take a motion on Resolution 2019-45.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
It's been motioned by Wendy and seconded by Sal. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please indicate by saying nay. That takes us, Resolution 2019-45 passes unanimously. Number C, Resolution Number 2019-46, is a resolution making budgetary transfers of appropriations, authors authority for the fiscal year 182019 in the ambulance fund. Marcia?
Thank you. This resolution is a little bit different than the other two that we talked about. This is the transfer that we have done in the past where we're actually moving appropriation from contingency and moving it to another category in that budget. So in this case, the background, I guess, is that, as you know, the city has contracted with a, another vendor. We've outsourced the ambulance billing function. And what that has allowed us to do is the, the two ambulance billing staff was actually freed up as we actually transferred the billing process itself in April. So the two individuals that are in my department that are continuing to do, work the existing accounts, and because they've had time to really dedicate to working and reviewing and following up on the existing accounts, they've just having more time to do that, we really are accelerating the accounts that we're identifying as uncollectible and sending to collections. So I don't expect that the dollar amount going to collections is going to significantly change. It really is just accelerating that collections write-off. And so I think there'll be more in 2018-19 than what we thought. But again, there would correspondingly be somewhat less in 1920.
Thank you, Marcia. Any question from Marcia on Resolution 2019-46?
Just one question, Marcia. How much have we drawn down the contingency in that, this year, that particular fund? Do you know?
I believe it was 229 before we did this 75. We started at 300. It was at 229 before we did this transfer, so, and then this additional 75.
And this 75, you're saying you feel that this is really just pushing forward what we would have been doing in the next fiscal year?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
And a second? It's been moved by Wendy and seconded by Adam. All those in favor of Resolution 2019-46, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Resolution 2019-46 passes unanimously. That takes us to Resolution 2019-47, a resolution making a budgetary transfer appropriation authority for fiscal year 2018-19, general fund. And so, Marcia?
Yes, this is the last resolution that is relating to the current fiscal year. So this resolution, again, moves contingency appropriation to another department in the general fund, in this case, to the finance department. And the reason that transfer is necessary is because we have vacation payouts for two employees in the finance department that wasn't, weren't anticipated when the budget was adopted. The first employee is the finance director, who is technically retired at the end of May and received payout for my outstanding vacation balance, which unfortunately was fairly high, because I guess I've missed taking out vacation. So if you're wondering why I'm still here tonight if I retired at the end of May, it's because I'm retired for PERS purposes. And so the, I have entered into agreement with the city to continue my employment through the end of August, and there is a benefit for the city for us to do it that way in that while I'm working as a PERS retiree, the city does not contribute PERS on my salary. The second individual in the finance department is the ambulance billing coordinator, who has been here for a while and has a balance of vacation and comp time. Those hours will be paid out to her on her last paycheck in June, because their last day will be June 30. That also was unanticipated. I did forget to mention that the vacation payout for the finance director actually was budgeted in 1920. So this isn't like extra, we're just, again, kind of shifting when we're spending it. So just to clarify that also. So I'd answer any questions that you might have about that.
We'll open it up to questions. Hearing none, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Zach and seconded by Wendy. Resolution 2019-47, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. This 2019-47 passes unanimously. That takes us to Resolution 2019-48, a resolution providing for certain increases to the combined fire and EMS fee schedule that allows the fire department to recover costs for fire and EMS services allowed within city ordinance and international fire codes as adopted by the state of Oregon. Marcia, we'll have you take that also.
Thank you. I guess I thought maybe that Chief Liefert would be here tonight. I was not aware that he would not be here. Okay, I'm very happy to hand that over to him.
It'll be a team event. Thanks, you guys.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Mayor and council, thank you. So the background on this is, over the last several years, actually, I'll take part, and then I'll let Chief McDermott take part, and it's kind of split out a bit. But over the last several years, we've seen an increase to our expenses regarding medical supplies, EMS supplies, and medications. So we're proposing an increase of $125 to our ALS calls. And then the additional calls, we would address with a suggested increase of 2.5 CPI.
The second portion of this is some fees, it's kind of shifting at the state level on whose jurisdiction, whether it's building or fire code, covers installation of fuel tanks, so we'll be shifting, and the fire department will be taking on that. And so those are the fees. And then there's also a fee for the inspection and permitting of hazardous materials operations. Those are the two basic increases for the prevention side.
And again, this is a part of your packet where those fee schedules are being updated and trying to keep us in line with the true cost as we're trying to provide the services and getting the dollars needed for that. So any questions from the council? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion on 2019-48.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Oh, moved by Sal, seconded by Adam. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution 2019-48 passes unanimously, and this takes us to the
Thank you.
Resolution 2019-49, a resolution adopting, thank you for your presentation, gals, and resolution adopting the budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019, making the appropriations, imposing the property taxes, and categorizing the property taxes. Marcia?
Thank you. This resolution is required by local budget law, and we are adopting the budget for 2019-20, allowing us to spend money, basically, to, and local budget law requires the council to not only make appropriations, but to impose the property taxes that we will levy and to categorize the property taxes. With the two different categories of property taxes being the general operating taxes that we collect, but also the taxes that we levy for our bonded debt service. So as I had mentioned earlier, the council can make changes to the budget that was approved by the budget committee. And there are a number of changes that are actually in this budget that is in front of you for adoption tonight. So I'd like to go over a couple of those. The ones that I specifically want to draw your attention to tonight is the reallocation of general fund contingency appropriation to the general fund. of general fund contingency appropriation to the general fund administration department and the reserve. So in the staff report, if you would look in the discussion section, there's more detail about that. So at the June 11 council meeting, there was several options that were discussed for use of the wastewater franchise fee revenue and also the TLT revenue. And so based on that discussion, staff has actually tonight prepared two resolutions adopting the budget with two different scenarios. I did want to note, because it is a little bit confusing, that as we're talking about the unrestricted portion of the TLT revenue, that number of 377,200 is the TLT revenue that's included in the 2019-20 budget. So that's an estimate of the revenue that we'll get for TLT next year. Okay, so we prepared two resolutions with two different scenarios. The first resolution takes one-half, or 50% of that unrestricted TLT revenue and allocates it for council spending in the administration, Marin City Council budget. And the other 50% would go to the general, be dedicated to the general fund reserve. So it's, both resolutions basically are using the same process, it's just a different amount. So the second resolution has two-thirds, or 67% of the TLT revenue allocated for council spending, and then the remainder going to the general fund reserve. So I would refer you actually to the staff report that was prepared by our city manager for some additional information on that, and also there's an attachment that we prepared showing what the general fund reserve percentage would look like in those different scenarios. And I believe there will be more discussion after my staff report, or would you prefer to shut up now?
So my suggestion is, Marcia, why don't you go through the other, sort of more housekeeping changes related to the budget, and then I'll help the council work their way through the discussion about the TLT.
That would be great. Okay, so the other changes that are in this budget in front of you that are different than what the budget committee approved, we already spoke earlier about the changes to the park development fund and the airport maintenance fund. Again, those required a public hearing because the increase in expenditures was more than 10%. And there are a number of other changes that are relating to additional funds in the planning department, for a consultant for the urban growth boundary, the fire department carried forward some capital outlay projects, mold remediation, and the system alerting system. And all of these are in your staff report. I'd be happy to answer questions about those. Really, they are kind of housekeeping. And these changes are made because in, on May 15, when we had the budget committee, the budget was based on the information that we had at the time. So now we're at the end of June, and the changes are really relating, many of them to projects that are being carried over from 1819. And so I think that's why the city manager has referred to these as more of housekeeping type items. The other changes were in the park and rec department for professional services. Park maintenance had some building repairs that were being carried forward. We had, street fund also had some building repairs carried forward. Transportation fund, same thing. We had some capital projects that were for street resurfacing in Old Sheridan Road. Progress on those projects wasn't where we thought it would be, June 30. That's being carried forward. Wastewater Capital, also, some projects being carried forward to 1920. Ambulance Fund is the fire hall, projects that I mentioned earlier with the mold remediation and the system alerting system. We also have some, we had budgeted for some software, for a HR software module in 1819, and that project, again, is being carried over to 1920. So that's a lot of changes. We normally don't have that many changes, but we wanted to make sure that the council was aware of the changes that we had made. So I think that, unless there's any other questions about that, I would recommend, of course, that at some point this evening that the council adopts a resolution, adopting the budget and making the appropriations and imposing the property taxes.
Thank you, Marcia. Any questions on anything other than the TLT dollars that Jeff will address with us? Go ahead, Wendy.
Marcia, this is not a huge amount, but I had a question about the street fund, $12,000 in material and services. It says on the CDC building repairs, why would building repairs be under the street fund?
I would ask our community development director to answer that question.
Thank you, Mike.
He was hiding in the back.
You'll see similar transfers in the park maintenance fund. So park maintenance and streets share the public workshop facility, and there's a waterline repair and an HVAC repair that won't be finished by June 30 that will carry over in the next year that will be done at the public workshops.
Okay. And so it falls in the street fund even though it's repairs to buildings? That was my question.
It's the building that the street department's housed in.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, thank you.
As well as park maintenance.
Gotcha. Okay, I get it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mike. Any other questions? Okay, Jeff, if you'll...
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, as a follow-up to the conversation about dedicating a portion of the unrestricted transient lodging tax to affordable housing initiatives, we felt like we heard broad agreement from the members of the council present on five issues. One, seeing a connection between tourism and affordable housing, therefore justifying a dedication of a portion of that revenue to affordable housing initiatives. One, a desire to maintain existing general fund services that are currently supported by those unrestricted TLT revenues. Three, an interest in committing resources to be able to encourage a variety of affordable housing strategies, recognition that recent actions by the city may require additional resources, and a strong preference to assist in stabilizing the general fund reserve. So with that as sort of the guiding principles, we put together four different scenarios, which is shown on an attachment similar to what you saw at your meeting last week, but it shows the scenarios of dedicating one-third, one-half, two-thirds, and 100% of that unrestricted transient lodging tax and the effect it would have on the ending fund balance as well. We only presented two resolutions. We had one council member who suggested spending a third, one council member who suggested spending all of the unrestricted, two who suggested two-thirds, one who suggested a half, and one something more than a third and less than all of it. So we sort of coalesced around those two options in the middle. We showed you two, so we have two resolutions, one that would dedicate about $190,000 unrestricted on TLT to a variety of affordable housing initiatives that are identified in the staff report. That would result in about a $310,000 increase to the ending fund balance. The second option would be to dedicate $250,000 to those affordable housing initiatives. That would generate about a $250,000 increase to the ending fund balance as well. The mechanics of how we present this in the budget is to place it in contingency under the city council's direction, in the city council budget, rather, and that was in recognition of the fact that all the projects and initiatives that were identified are sort of opportunity-based and a little bit speculative. None of them necessarily are ready to go, but what we heard was broad support that when there's a project or when there's an initiative, we'd like to be able to have resources to deploy. What that means is if an opportunity for land banking or leveraging gap financing or supporting a regional coordinator for homelessness really comes to fruition, we'll bring that to the council, and to spend any of these dollars that we've identified in the contingency, we'll need a resolution from the council. So the council maintains control over how much and for what purposes this money is going to be spent. And so we've presented it that way in the budget for you to approve tonight. The key point of direction that we need from you is related to the amount of money that you want to dedicate to those affordable housing initiatives. And again, it's either one-half or two-thirds of the unrestricted transient lodging tax. And then depending on the council's consensus around that issue, we would recommend adoption of the budget that's presented to you with either of those options in place. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Jeff. Any clarification needed, and then discussion on the direction that you'd rather, go with 50 or 67%?
Just one clarification.
Go ahead, Sal.
Thank you, Mayor. Jeff, just one clarification. The expenditure side is split between the affordable housing portion as well as possible enforcement actions, is that...
So the funds are in a single contingency account, and the council has the ability to direct those funds either for those of affordable housing initiatives or those sort of impacts of regulatory activity?
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have another clarifying question. So when we were having the discussion, we were talking, started talking about the fee, the sewer fee, and we decided that the TLT dollars made sense. So the idea, I think, if I remember correctly from the discussion, was that we would take a portion of the TLT dollars but then backfill it with the street. So the remainder of the, I mean, I'm sorry, the sewer fee, the remainder of the sewer fee would be what was going into the...
Ending fund balance.
Ending fund balance, okay. And then, yeah, that answers my question. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Wendy. Any other questions?
I don't really have a question. I would just reiterate that I would have a hard time moving past 50% of unrestricted TLT dollars being appropriated for that, strictly for the fact that I feel it would leave a gaping hole in all the budgets of departments that it currently serves. I respect all those departments and what they do, and I don't want to disserve them. And as tourism increases and TLT dollars increase, so is the burden in all those departments. So I want to make sure that, you know, we keep at that 50%, and we don't take all the TLT dollars and then all the TLT dollars forward, which isn't in the resolution here. It was just a mentioned item at that time, so I'd just like to reiterate that, Stan.
I have you under the 50 cent unrestricted or the first resolution. Okay. Any other comments, any other direction?
I would be in support also of the lower amount going, to be earmarked for that, only because I feel, like Jeff referred to, I would feel more comfortable looking at an actual project that we know what it's going towards, we know what that sweet spot is for investment. At this time, I think it's a good idea for us to have some funds because we know we're going to have some dollars that are going to need to be spent, both on what we're going to be doing with enforcement as well as for some of the projects. But I'd like to see more, Jeff, some more clear directive on actual budgets for actual projects that this will be going for, and that will give us more guidance on how much money will get the needle moving on real solutions. So I think the 50% amount is the one I'm most comfortable with at this point.
Thank you, Wendy. Sal?
So I think that on a going-forward basis, the 50% number makes sense. I do think in year one, there's likely to be a lot of costs that are incurred upfront that we may not experience in an ongoing basis, and in particular with respect to the initial enforcement push. As I've said, I've had concerns about us adequately funding that. And so my suggestion would be, year one, do it at the two-thirds rate so that we have $250,000 to spend in the first year, but then revisit it on an annual basis to reauthorize the expenditure, so that we could lower it year two. But I've had feedback since we approved the initial resolution for the wastewater treatment, you know, why aren't we putting a sunset on these and forcing the council to kind of review these increases on a periodic basis? And that's a pretty common thing to do in governments, and I don't think it's a bad idea. It may be outside of the scope of what we're deciding here, but I think it's something we should consider, and that would give us an opportunity to reduce the rate next year if we went with a higher number to, out of recognition for what the enforcement is going to have to deal with.
So you'd have a one-year sunset on the 67 and want to readdress it? Interesting.
David, is that easily addable to the 67% resolution tonight, or would that have to come back to us again?
Well, this is a one-year budget, so the budget for next year hasn't been prepared or presented to you. I would think that if we identified significantly more or significantly fewer needs around these issues moving into the next budget year, you'd see a budget for 2021 that would reflect what we expect those needs to be. Certainly, you can set an expectation that we would, if the council wants to spend or wants to dedicate, again, there's no guarantee that you would spend that much because it's all in contingency until you release it for expenditure. If you want to dedicate two-thirds of that money and make it clear that without a compelling reason, you'd want to see a lower percentage in next year's budget, I'd certainly take that as direction when I'm building the proposed budget. But this is only a one-year spending plan. The other thing that I'll say in response to some of the comments, both tonight and in other cases, is the new regulations that we're putting in place may well carry some additional costs. They may not be net additional costs because we're spending a lot of staff time dealing with the current situation that we won't necessarily have to spend once the regulations are implemented. So we want to see how that shakes out, and we may just be spending the same staff resources in a different way. It may not result in that increased costs to enforce these regulations. And so we'd like to see how that plays out over the course of the year, be able to report back to you periodically what the impact of that is. I don't necessarily see this as any different than trying to be responsive to another change in the course of a fiscal year. Anytime new issues come up, whether they're project-related or staffing-related, we on a regular basis bring to you proposals to deal with that. This is the spending plan. This is based on the best information we have. If we have a slew of affordable housing projects that come forward, we may be suggesting to you to target other resources that are beyond this in the budget. But we try to use this as the plan going into the year and try to be responsive to needs as they occur during the course of the year. I think that whatever the council's comfort level is, we can manage either of these options effectively.
So understanding, Jeff, this is a one-year, really, it's a one-year dedication because we will be back in the budget process. So I'm just going to go down to Zach. Wendy?
I just have one more question.
Go ahead, question.
So with regards to, since there is some openness about how this money will be spent, and I know that, like, for example, when we budget, we approve the budget for the parks department, you don't come back and tell us everything that's happening with the parks department. What is, what will the communication be with regards to that spending and our involvement in how that money is...
Well, because we're placing this in a contingency account in the city council's budget, it will require a resolution by the council to release any of that money to be spent. So none of it will be spent on any of these issues or things we haven't contemplated without us making a presentation to the council, the council taking an affirmative policy action, and then moving the money to wherever it may need to be spent. It could be that some of this money would be spent in another department, and so we would make possibly a budget amendment at some point along the way. But again, it would require action by the council to do that.
A real good safeguard.
In addition to exploring alternate uses or diversions of the 30% to more specific uses, which is what we're talking about now, we talked about, I guess for lack of a better term, renegotiating or talking about renegotiating that 70-30 split, and we couched, I seem to recall, couching a discussion around what, if any, do we have a tourism-related facility that we can invest in, and starting to explore that. So I guess as we talk about this still, I'm still interested in having that discussion or finding out if that is a discussion that we're able to have. I know there were some timelines on contract negotiations that if we miss a couple benchmarks, we don't have the ability for a while to talk about what are that 70%. And so I'm still interested in having that discussion as part of this.
We're committed to doing that. We'll bring that forward in a work session or a series of work sessions to the council. We're working with Visit McMinnville right now to identify some windows of time, probably late summer, early fall, to start that conversation with the council, which would give us ample time to negotiate any new terms if that's the direction of the council.
Impacting roughly, roughly impacting, any decisions we make on that timeline would impact a budget win.
Depends on how you negotiate. You've got the ability to negotiate any changes to the agreement, including the current year's agreement and future year's agreement. So it would be a negotiation of the two parties.
Okay. I just remember a key milestone being a date out. You have to notify them if you're going to do something...
If either party wants to terminate the agreement, there has to be a notice by December 31st. The parties can always renegotiate the agreement anytime. And you could, you could renegotiate the existing agreement for the 1920 fiscal year, or you could negotiate a new agreement for the 2021 fiscal year. That'd be at the, at the permission of the parties.
Thank you, David. Great Jeff impersonation. Thank you for that. Thanks.
Okay. So I'd like just to get a feel for where individuals are. So Zach, where do you feel you are at this point?
I am somewhere in between the half and two-thirds. I...
But you have to pick one of them.
Can we have like a 2.2, 5 resolution that explores? So I'm bouncing back and forth on a strong feeling between half and two-thirds. I think with our, I think, I think I'm falling more towards the half, knowing that it's a one-year agreement, and we could generate some buzz and excitement with those projects and hopefully show a demonstrated ability to fund those exciting projects and get a sense of where they are, and carry that into, carry that into next year. That way, we keep other costs aside to backfill cost of services for some of the immediate actions that we're asking for. So I think at this moment, I'd feel more comfortable with half, and I'm definitely open to, as we go forward, watching the revenues from visiting Louisville's hard work expand, even continuing that percentage and expanding that number for us, or expanding the number as more projects get onboarded and discussed.
Thank you, Zach. I'll then go back to Adam. Are you, are you still on the 50% or are you leaning 67?
Yeah, I'm still on the 50%. And if it ended up being that we needed more dollars for enforcement out of that franchise fee or the general fund reserves, I'm more than willing to look at that. And I definitely don't want us to not be able to enforce ordinances that we've passed due to funding when we have a new revenue source to fund it.
And Wendy, are you still?
Yeah, I'm at half.
Okay. So what we're looking at under Resolution 2019-49 is the 50% unrestricted TLT in the general fund. Do I hear the motion?
Still moved.
A second?
Second.
It has been moved by Adam, seconded by Zach. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by saying nay? This passes, Resolution 2019-49, with the 50% unrestricted TLT general fund dollars passes unanimously.
I really apologize, but budget law is very specific about what the motion should include. So if I could ask you to add the other details to it.
Okay. It was stated by Counselor Garvin and seconded by Counselor Geary to adopt Resolution 2019-49, adopting the, so it is, I have 40 down here, but it is 49, correct?
40.
Yeah.
20.
49, adopting the 2019-20 budget in the amount of $114,225.82 for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2019. To make the appropriations in the amount of $75,993.55. To impose and ca... Go ahead. So, that's a million. Okay, $75,903.55, or $35, and to impose and categorize the city of McMinnville's permanent property tax rate at 5.2 per thousand assessed value for gen...
Point zero two.
Point zero, okay, point five, $5.02 per thousand value for general operations, and $3,716.108 for debt service. Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, please signify by saying nay. Resolution 2014-49 passes unanimously. Thank you for a discussion that spent quite a bit of time at our last meeting and we're taking care of today. Okay, this moves us to the ordinances. This is going to be a long meeting tonight. Yeah, let's go ahead and take about a five-minute break. We've been going at it for quite a while. So we'll be back at 9:05.